Good morning, everyone. My name is Ron Zarney and I'm the moderator today for the representing the seniors of the colony here. We're representing the 501 3C senior group, which meets here on a monthly basis and on a quarterly basis for the board. We are proud to always have had, over the last 14 or 15 years that I've been associated with the seniors, we have always had a forum. And I'm glad that we can continue that today. So I would like to introduce the candidates. This is Eddie McCormick, Joe McCurry, Kirk Mikulik. Watch me goof this one up. Okay, this is Jasmine Agudelo.
Jasmine Agudelo.
Agudelo. I knew I could get it wrong. Okay, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. The way this works is we're going to have candidates, the candidates can present a three-minute opening statement. Candidates will be allowed one minute to respond to prepared questions. Those are the questions that you people send in. And the candidates may present a one-minute closing statement at the end of our session here. The timekeeper of luck will indicate when a candidate has 30 seconds remaining to complete their response and a red card to hold when it's time to stop. At the time limit, I'm reading the same thing I just said. During the open forum, citizens are welcome and encouraged to address questions to specific candidates. All questions must be written on a blank card. Questions will be picked up by runners. The moderator will read the questions to the candidates. Please be succinct with your question. Each candidate is allowed up to one minute to answer a question from the citizen. Thank you for attending this candidate forum. All right, we'll begin with asking some questions. I'm going to take them out here. I don't have any particular order that I've put these in. This, oh, wait, I want to back up a minute. Before we start, we have an incumbent councilman here, I think, Richard Boyer. And Richard really is not having any opposition. And we offered him either to sit at the table with the other candidates or to have an opening statement for us, because Richard stands opposed. And we gave him that choice, and he decided to do the opening statement because he doesn't want to take time away from the candidates that are actually, that are actually have competition. So Richard, if you say a few words, it'd be good.
Thank you, Ron. As Ron said, I'm Richard Boyer. I am running unopposed for place two at the city council. We'll hear the opening statements and get questions from the folks that have contested races. I just want to take a moment to thank the seniors for having this event. I know that I've been coming to every one probably for the last 12 years or so and never miss it whether I'm on the ballot or not. And quite frankly, I got so much great support over the years from the seniors. You could make the argument that I might not be in place to without the support from the group that meets here and goes through activities here, and I really do appreciate that. There's so much great, so many great things going on in our community, and hopefully we'll get the chance to talk about those things and the things that the city council should be doing to make things even better in the future. So I don't want to take up any more time. I was told I went too long at the last forum, so can't help it. But anyway, everyone, enjoy what the candidates have to say. And again, thank you to the seniors for hosting this event. Thank you.
Thank you. When we have questions, we're going to start with Jasmine down there, and we'll just go right down the row. And the first question is for everyone. And that, I beg your pardon?
That's the first question.
I'm going to go to the page here to see what I forgot. Under that category, it's everything. Okay, we're going to do an opening statement. Jasmine?
I just want to say, it's Yasmin. Me, like, the opposite of what I am. You'll remember it now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Yasmin Agudelo. I am running for city council place one this year. And I just wanted to say thank you for coming out. I know it's a beautiful morning, and I'm sure you would like to be outside, but you are here, so thank you. I'm running for city council because I'm born, born here, born and raised here. I've lived by Bill Allen Park ever since I was two years old, and I have seen the city grow. And it's the most exciting thing for me to see my community grow and expand and include different people from all walks of life. And I care about the community. I want to help continue this growth, and I want to help new people get involved. I, when I was younger, you know, I remember all of my community leaders being so involved in my life, and they were tireless. They worked so hard to make sure that the future generations, we knew that we were taken care of. We knew that there were people in our city that loved us, that wanted to make sure that we had the best. And now I see it as my responsibility to do the same. I'm in a position where I've had so many opportunities, and I'm very blessed and very privileged to be able to come back to my hometown and, and take all of the energy that was put into me and give it back. I have been involved with the library ever since middle school. I've been volunteering there, and as I got older, I got more involved. The teen room, the teen area that we currently have now, I was on a small teen committee to create that, to help get the furniture, to help choose the books, and that still exists today. I helped, we helped organize a teen group for the library, a very important demographic in the library that had not previously been represented. And, and this is how I see my candidacy. I, I want to encourage people who didn't think that they could be included in government or community building to get involved. It's so important to me that everyone knows that their voice is being heard. It's so important to me that, it's so important to me that, that everyone knows that they have the opportunity to make a difference. And I've been involved in leadership positions ever since then, where I was in school in DC at Georgetown, or whether I'm here back in the colony. I know that, that I have the qualifications and the time and the energy to make sure that this city is being well taken care of. Thank you.
Good morning. How y'all doing? My name is Kirk Mikulik, and I'm running for reelection for city council place one. We've done a lot of cool things these last several years on city council to help bring jobs here from economic development. You see it everywhere, Nebraska Furniture, Top Golf. Many places are coming here and allowing people to work and live in their own community. What we're going to continue to do is continue to bring economic development in. We're going to continue to put more money into the streets, from dropping off friends of my son to driving around the neighborhoods. We see, we still have work to do. We know that. Takes time. We're putting those funds towards those streets, and we're going to look and see what we can do in the future to pick up that pace. Something that's very cool that we've done, and a lot of us on council, all of us on council, have been passionate about and supportive of, is a student leadership program for the city of the colony. Over the last three years with support of council, we've worked with our middle schools and our high school, where we have a day where the students, as selected by their teachers, come, they listen to department directors, they visit some of our facilities, they visit some of our businesses, they have a mock city council meeting, and they're getting to see how our government works. We learn about them. We learn about what their passions are, what their goals are. And going forward, being reelected, we'll continue those programs and continue to help people reach their American dream here in the colony. And I appreciate your support in my reelection campaign. I want to thank the seniors for having this event today. I know it takes a lot of work to plan all these things and time out of your Saturday, so thank you very much.
Thanks to the seniors for holding this forum this morning and giving us the opportunity to express where we stand on all of the issues here facing our city and being able to put that word out as exactly what we are about. I want to tell you a story, you know, going back to 2001. That's when I got involved in our city. You know, I ran a race against the individual that was in place one, and I lost, but I didn't give up. Getting on city council and being able to affect change in our city was something that I was not going to stop going after. And since that time, I came back in 2002, and I won place three. I've been on the council since then, except for one little year in between where I had to get off of my seat and to move into the mayor's, it's just the way the elections fall. But since 2002, I have been dedicated to helping and serving the city. We have made a lot of change, and we have done that without losing any city services at any time. We have continued each year to lower the tax rate steadily, incrementally, and without fail. One time, we had to leave it flat. Out of 14 times, we had to leave it flat, 2003, I believe, was the year. That was an awful financial year, you know, for the city and for the state. But other than that, we have been very committed to following that. The council has a kind of an unwritten policy that when the taxes come in good, we want to share that with our citizens. Not just use every bit of it to put out there for infrastructure, give that back to the citizens. Citizens take that money and they spend it in our community, which then comes back to the city, and that circle goes around, and that helps us all. And that is a program that we are going to continue going forward. That is a commitment from everybody on council, including myself. There is a lot to be done. We have put in the hours over this last 13 years in order to go after the infrastructure, the corporate people that will help us fix our infrastructure. Roads, our wastewater treatment plant, I know everybody out there wants to be able to flush their toilet. TCEQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. They have rules about those wastewater treatment plants, and those are big dollar items. We are improving that. We are going to continue with that. We have a second phase still coming. It's very expensive. The same thing with roads. Even though there may be tax dollars that look like they're coming in and people think they're coming in, it's going to be another year or a year and a half before the city ever sees any of the taxed revenues from the things that are being built out there to today. We are not spending dollars that we don't have in the bank, and that is very important in leading this city. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Ron, thanks for holding this forum today for us. My name is Eddie McCormick. I have lived here in the colony since 1992. That's 23 years. My first year in the colony, it brought me up here because of the growth in legacy EDS and JC Penney's. My background is commercial construction. Started in the field, worked up to project management estimating until finally getting out of that in 2009 to become an executive director for a few of the leading construction trade associations in the state and in the nation. Like I said, my background is commercial construction. One of my slogans on my flyers, also some of the big signs, is the experienced choice for our growing city. Keyword "growing." I know that question was asked at the last forum, but it didn't get presented, so I want to spend a little time on that. What I mean "growing" and "experienced choice" is I have 23 years' experience in what's happening in the colony right now, and that is construction growth. Also, I have some experience in the city in itself, spending four years on planning a zoning commission, working along with a few of the council people who are currently seated right now. So with that combined, that's why I chose to use that slogan. I love the colony. I've been here since I was 22 years old. I've served the colony. My first couple of years here, I wanted to figure a way to give back, and that's when I chose to become a volunteer firefighter here, way back in the day when there was only four paid firefighters. So I loved doing that. We've worked on coat drives here in the city. Started small with a local middle school, then the other middle school got involved, and it grew and grew. It caught the eye of, I call him a friend, Mark Cuban, and he came up with an idea to have that competition citywide, all over North Texas, and he donated numerous tickets for these kids. So I like to instill that in our youth that we have here in the colony and let them know that they, they do have a voice, even though if they're not 18 and can't vote, that they do have a voice with our city. But the main thing, knowing that when they do grow up like Yasmin, that they have this opportunity to give back and fulfill any civic duties that they'd like. So we're going to get a bunch of questions today. I'll wait till the end. If a couple of important ones aren't brought up, then I'll, I'll address those in my closing remarks. But again, I want to run as your mayor for these next three years, and three years only, because at that time, hopefully, this growth and grand scape and 121 will be done, be done correctly, be done efficiently, and done with the greatest return to our city and our citizens.
Okay, I'm going to thank you, everybody, for your opening statements. I'm going to make a little change. I've checked with our, the president, Alice Roofey. We're going to make a slight change in the timekeeping, and that change is that when, the way it is right now, you have one minute to respond to the questions, we're going to extend that to up to two minutes. You don't have to take the two minutes if you don't want to, but if you, if you feel that there's, if there's enough information that you have to give for that extra minute, we're going to allow that. All right, here comes the first question. This is, and this question is to everyone, so it'll start with Jasmine. It'll start with Jasmine. By the way, this, she don't know that. This is an inside joke. My name is Zarney, and it's C-Z-A-R-N-Y, and you don't know what people call, have come up with that. And, okay. What is your goal? To lower property taxes and the high water rates.
So currently, property taxes are rising because property values are rising because of the growth of the city. There is already a plan in place to continue to lower the tax rate. While that tax, the lowering of the tax rate does not compensate for the growing property values, I think that there's still more of a, there's more flexibility that we have to lower it. Because these property taxes are, the values are rising, every citizen is paying more money, even though the tax is being lowered. Same with the utility bills. Every citizen, whether they own a house or not, is paying more money. And so my goal would be to, you know, I cannot just, you know, because we are a team, city council is a team, I cannot be the one to say, I'm going to lower all of the property taxes immediately. We need to work with our city manager to see where money can be cut, where money can be moved. You know, I, I know that we've taken out bonds in the past in order to pay for a lot of the upgrades that we need for the city, and, and I would try to, to stay away from that. You know, we need to work with the money that we have now, the money that's coming in now. Bonds mean more money per citizen to be paid in the future.
Same question. Okay. I would continue to incrementally decrease property taxes as we have. Right now, they're 67 cents per hundred. Those property taxes do help pay for our infrastructure, and you mentioned, I think, the waste treatment plant, utility taxes. TCEQ has mandates, and when our sewage flow gets to a certain number, you have to have your planning done. At another number, I think it's 90% or so, then you have to have begun construction. If you don't do those things, the TCEQ mandates, the city is hit with fines. So I will continue on the path we're on to address those TCEQ issues and to incrementally decrease property taxes.
Thank you. Like Kirk said, we have a plan in place in order to continue to lower our property taxes. Yes, your property taxes are increasing, and that is generating more revenue. However, the cost of our infrastructure and the cost to put those things on the ground is not going down. In order to fund $18 million just to do the wastewater treatment plant, you have to go out for a bond. We do not have the funds, even with the rising property taxes, in order to just pay those with cash. I can tell you that we have done things to be as slim as we can. The city has a program in place where we are going out for managed competition. What does that mean? That means we're taking all of our departments out to the private sector in order to find out if there's a cheaper way for us to do government. And we weigh that against the cost of the government itself. Sometimes the government wins, sometimes it's outsourced. But that's what's best for the citizens in lowering the cost for the government. We had to go out for this bond if we were going to meet the deadlines for TCEQ. That does mean that we did raise the water rates. We cannot help that. We did not raise the water rates for over five years prior to that in trying to hold down the cost. In being able to meet the demand to pay those bonds so that we can meet the TCEQ state mandates, we have to fund some of these things through bonds. There's just no other way around it. On the heels of that one, that $18 million is going to come. We will go right back into design in order to design the other half of the wastewater treatment plant that is going to be about $25 million. That, too, will have to be a bond. But we wouldn't go out for these bonds except for the fact that we have to. For the last five years, we did not borrow money. The streets that we improved, all of the improvements in our infrastructure that we did, we took on in-house with the cash that we had. Thank you.
Property taxes, that's, that has always been a love-hate relationship. We love it when our property values go up, when it's time to sell, but we don't like it when our escrow goes up because of taxes. Like the incumbents have talked about, the tax rate going down. It has, you know, maybe a quarter of a penny here or a half of a penny here, but it has gone down. It's hard to keep that flow going with the increase in property taxes as an equation to what the city can do back, can give back to the citizens when it comes to infrastructure or sidewalks or streets. The wastewater that's been discussed for the past few months, the water increase rates, that's not just the colony people. You've probably read the newspaper, but it's, it's a lot of the North Texas cities. And the colony has kind of drug its feet on being prepared and looking into the future about this, and now the time is here, so these increases are necessary. There's really nothing that we can do about that or even having to get, get another bond to help pay for those things.
All right, this next question is for everyone. Let's see if I can get through this here. The colony seems to be headed in the right direction with growth. Why should we change the seats of the people driving the growth forward? That's part of the question. And what do you plan or plan on doing to steer us in the right direction if you are elected? This probably would be mostly directed to the people that are, that are not in office, but those two questions came on this one sheet. So I would split that up. Let's start by answering this question. Why should we change the seats of the people driving the growth in the colony?
Are we going to start this and go back the other way? Are we going to start in the middle with Kirk starting this time and just keep switching? Please, please advise.
It's easier when I have to make decisions at home because my wife makes them. Okay, let's start with Eddie.
Okay, the first question you asked, why, why make a change in council now since, since the growth is here? That's exactly why we need to make a change. The colony has been the same since I've lived here all the way up until the mid 2000s. When the colony changes, the people that run this city or help run this city and guide the city need to change. If someone is in a position for too long, they become complacent, they start to fail to see the big picture. And, and I know this from talking to many citizens in this city, and especially this past week, the business owners, business owners on Main Street. But change is good, and when you get new people with fresh ideas into local government, it can do nothing but benefit that local government. The, the opposite of that, you know, trying to keep a, whether it is a board or a council or, you know, the, any group that you may be associated with. You know, I deal with two associations, and our board changes every two years because we want to keep those new ideas coming in. We don't want our board members or the executive board to become complacent. We want the new people that are coming into construction, the new people that are coming into the industry and the growth of the state of Texas to bring their experiences to that. And that's why local government, in my opinion, needs to change. One of the big things on my platform, you'll see on my website, is term limits. It's been brought up, it's been brought up. I met with the city manager two weeks ago, and that's a big issue, and it will never get changed until council, for the council people, propose to make that change in our charter and then put it out to vote with the citizens. Second question, second part of that question?
The second part of the question is, what do you plan to do to steer us in the right direction if you are elected?
The first two things that I'm going to work on, that I've talked to local businesses about, and they both pertain to businesses, and I said this, this at the last forum, and it was also presented to our council three months ago, and it was basically a slap in the face to our business owners here on Main Street. This health inspection scorecard system, we are one of the few cities in North Texas that have that. That is detrimental to a business, especially small businesses, that choose to come to the colony and, and start their lives. So I agree, we need that, and it's, it's a good system, but it can't be updated enough quickly, it can't be updated quickly enough, it can't be changed. And it also doesn't tell you why that letter is there, A, B, C. We need to do, and reach out to other cities to see what has worked with that system, keep that electronic on a website, create an app, and most importantly, get these business owners, these restaurant owners, together in a committee and get feedback from them. Not just have them come to council and say, we don't like this, this doesn't work this way, can we do this? And then turn the back on them and say, no, we're going to do it this way. Second part of that is helping these businesses on Main Street. I have a program ready to go, day one, if I'm elected, to help these businesses on Main Street. It has been tried and true. It's part of chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code. I've seen it work with some business owner friends of mine in Grapevine when 114 came through, and it can work here. And that has not been brought up to our local businesses on Main Street who are suffering. They need more than leniency on signs. They need help with the financial burdens that they're going through, and I will be there to do that.
Joe?
On the first part of the question, why change? Vote for Joe for mayor. It's that simple. Let's continue what we're doing. You know, the people on council today, we are not complacent. We don't just sit back in our jobs and just let things go by. I take half of my leave from my company in order to go on my time, my dollar, from my company, instead of spending it with my family, in order to travel all across the country at times in order to seek new businesses and continue the growth in, in this town. That is what is important. We have still thousands of acres out there in order to develop and to help get developed, and it is our responsibility in order to go out and seek the businesses that complement our community. Not just let them come, but go and seek the ones that complement our community. Those are the things that the, that the people have asked us to do. We are doing what the people have asked us to do. That growth will continue because we have gone out
have gone out and we have made those contacts. We have set those friendships in motion in order to bring some very unique things to this town. Being here from the experience of years, and knowing how our budgets work, and knowing how our incentive policies are, is one of the most important things that a councilman can learn. And this council being experienced in being there for several years gives us that advantage, so that we can apply those on the spot with other businesses that are looking to come here. So pushing our growth forward is one of the main things that we will do. On the second half of that question, Ron. We have in motion many, many parts for the growth of our city. We are also looking at least five years out, eight years out, in what we're going to do as things mature. We're not sitting here just looking at what's happening today and saying, "Oh, joy, oh joy." We are out there planning for our future. We are estimating what dollars and what revenues could possibly come in from the things that we know are already coming here. Taking those dollars and applying them to our infrastructure and getting that up to speed. We have to take care of our house first, before we can go out for all of those fun amenities. We are not going to stop any of the fun amenities that we already have today. Our parks are being improved every day. We just dedicated a brand-new play structure out at Stewart Creek Park. There are plans out there to continue to put docks and everything else out there. Incrementally, as the money comes in, we are going to continue to provide both those fun things and the necessity things that we have to have. Everybody, everybody, every door that you knock on says, "What are you going to do about my streets?" We're doing five this year, plus we're doing alleyways, we're continuing to do sidewalks. We have put in place in this budget a brand-new hotshot crew to go out and fix those hotspots that are out there being beat up, because we've got a Main Street under construction. You know, that is a Tech Dot project. We are working with them. We've got contacts. We just sent a delegation down to Austin in order to meet with Tech Dot, the director of Tech Dot. That's the friendships that have been made by us being here. And we are utilizing them in order to help us and to help keep you safe. And we are going to continue to do that, along with improving our public safety along the way. Thank you.
Ron, can you repeat the question? It's been a few minutes since I've heard those two questions.
This is this question was to everyone, Kirk. The Colony seems to be headed in the right direction with growth. Why should we change the seats of the people driving the growth forward? And then the second part of that question is, what do you plan on doing to steer us in the right direction if you were elected?
Thank you, Ron. So the team that we have now on city council, those are just seven individuals. We have numerous city boards, and the challengers in our race have both sat on boards, or do sit on boards currently, whether it's planning and zoning, library, community development, economic development, Board of Adjustments. So there's our numerous boards, and we take those folks' advice. They work on projects for us. The new play structure that the mayor just mentioned, that was a result of a lot of work from people from Parks and Rec and the Community Development Corporation. So we're taking multiple pieces of advice from people that are in many different industries and have different responsibilities within the city. And that plan has brought us forward and will continue to bring us forward. That's why I'm running for reelection. So, and if reelected, we're going to continue to do those things. It's real simple. You want your toilets to flush, your water to run, keep improving streets. Something else that we've done just very recently, our October, let's see if I can do this aggie math in my head, October 6th, at our meeting, we changed the zoning from residential to general retail at the corner of Lake Highlands and Main Street. We approved a new strip center in there. They have to come in under the new guidelines for the Gateway Overlay District. So that's improvement in our city's core. While we can't force people to build any quicker, if they're private property owners, for the pats, the auto mechanic shop that burned, we've got a plan with them. They've said they're going to demolish that. If they don't, we've already got a meeting set with Building Standards Commission, to where we're going to put things in motion to get that improved. Anyone new that comes in, has to come in under our current standards. Thank you.
Repeat that second part again?
Okay.
I just, I saw the time, so I thought it was done.
Well, it's kind of a combination question here. And what do you plan on doing to steer us in the right direction if you are elected?
So for steering us in the future, we're going to continue to take input from folks from those boards, from people on council, from experts we have on staff, from engineering, from utilities, from fleet services. We have the experts in place now. Over the last several years, many of those positions, the mayor talked about managed competition. Many of those positions, the leadership has changed. We've gotten more effective, productive people in there. So we're going to support those efforts to continue to become more effective and more productive with the resources that we have now. Thank you.
Jasmin?
Change fosters growth. And when a lot of our city council members were elected, they were elected all at once, and they were the ones who started this growth, who built these plans to get us where we are now. And they do have plans in place. However, there are so many opportunities that we have in order to grow more and to grow differently. Most of our growth and our change has been focused on building and economic development, which is important to the growth of our city. However, there are other ways in which our city can grow. We can grow in a community. We can grow the ties between different community organizations, so people can share their ideas. When you have new ideas, you can have so many new opportunities that weren't heard before. There are people who have had so many great ideas, just talking to them, say, "That's a wonderful idea. I wish that they're, you know, I wish you would get involved." "Well, I don't have enough time." We need to find new ways to get new people involved. And this growth has been wonderful, to get people motivated, or excited, or confused. And it's these emotions, these strong emotions, that get new ideas in. The frustration with streets. Frustration is a very powerful emotion, and it gets people motivated. And for me, it's these new ideas that I think need to be heard. And I think that we need that change. Not everything is changing. There are two positions up that have the possibility to change. There are five that will remain the same. Our city manager's office will remain the same, and he's done a wonderful job in encouraging this growth. So this is why I think that there is a need for change in order to continue this growth. The second part, what would I do? I mentioned in the beginning, we need to help build community ties. We have done a lot of focusing on growth, and now we need to look in within the community. How can we strengthen the community? Growth is important, but strengthening is an equally necessary part in building a community. Our city is physically growing. My focus is, how can we make sure that the heart of the community, these families, our schools, how, making sure that we're listening to them, and listening to these parents, and these, our property owners, people who, young people. Austin Ranch is a vibrant community. How are we going to get all of these new people moving into our city involved?
Eddie McCormick, this question is for you. If elected as mayor, what is your vision for the city for the next three years?
As I stated before, if elected as mayor, my vision is to hopefully finally get grand scape built out with vibrant businesses that will bring the revenue, bring the people, bring the visitors to our city, and let them see what the Colony is, other than the bedroom community that's been engulfed in people's heads for the past twenty years. You know, I do spend a lot of time in Austin Ranch, a lot of time in Cascades, and these are people that have only been here maybe five years. Austin Ranch, some of those people don't even know where they live in the Colony. They think they're in Plano. The Cascades, that is a tight-knit community over there, and they come in through 121 and Morningstar, and they leave through 121 and Morningstar. I want them to know that there's another part of the Colony, and that's North Colony and Main Street. That's South Colony and Page. I want them to see that, hey, the city cares, the city's going to redevelop these areas, so that you can stay within our borders and do everything you need, instead of going to other cities. Yeah, it's great, we've got these new businesses coming in on 121. The EDC has done a great job. The current council's done a great job of getting them here. But we can't forget the businesses that have been here for ten, fifteen, twenty years, that chose to be here and chose to stay here. We've got to take care of them. We've got to have those plans in action to revamp these old retail centers, and make sure that those businesses know that we haven't forgot about you. You know, there's been grand openings going on on 121, and that's great, but, you know, for the sake of me, I don't understand why our city, our council, goes to a grand opening for a restaurant or entertainment facility, where the tax dollars go to City of Lewisville. That's something that was brought up to me Thursday, when I met with a business on Main Street. I didn't have an answer for him. I know it's being a great neighbor to Mayor Durham in Lewisville, but, you know, we've got to take care of our businesses that are here and that have been here.
Joe McCurry? In 2012, you voted to dissolve the Cultural Arts Advisory Board, and turn it into a committee that reports to the city manager. Now, three years later, this entity is discussing dissolving again, and turning into a separate nonprofit or city board again. Why? Why are your plans changing? What is this new entity?
Well, it is a board that is controlled, it's called the CMAC, it is the city manager's, you know, arts committee. Yes, I did dissolve, vote to dissolve that board. The way that the current board was working was not, it was not working, and that was the problem. And putting it under a different structure, putting it under the head of the city manager's office, for, you know, the direct control in his office, gave a constant and full-time look at the Cultural Arts Committee. It also gave the work that they were doing. It also allowed for the combination of what goes on in Parks and Rec, in order to be joined with what the Cultural Arts Committee was doing. That makes sense. Join them together instead of them doing two separate things. That was always a problem in the past. You know, the Cultural Arts Committee would go out and they would have, you know, a band in the park. Two months later, Parks and Rec would do the same thing. Well, why are they not getting together and joining their, you know, their funds together, and doing this as a group? That's why we joined them that way. Now that a few years has gone by, and they have had success in putting these types of events together, the board themselves, this is the citizens that are appointed to this committee, they are asking that they change their structure. That's why this is coming back to us, to look at reforming this in a different manner. This is our citizens asking for a change. This is your council listening to those requests, and considering them, and at one point in the future, possibly to be voted on. That's what we're here to do. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is for both the incumbents, Kirk and Joe, and we can start with Kirk. What are you doing or planning to do to get through, to help business on Main Street, to get through the construction process? I have a question that's added to this for the challengers, but let's get these two done first.
Thank you, Ron. Before they ever broke ground on 423, before Tech Dot started doing that, through our Economic Development Department and staff, we had meetings with the local businesses. We talked to them about additional signage. We told them what was coming. We've worked with them on their request. We've listened. Tech Dot has ultimate control over that project. They listen to us on matters of safety. Tech Dot does not take into account our convenience. I can tell you firsthand, I sit in that traffic every day at North Colony and Main. I'm right there with all the people suffering. It is an inconvenience. Tech Dot looks at safety. So from our end, from the city end, what we have done, we've helped them with signage, we've had meetings. Whenever there's been questions come up, we have one of our lead staff members, his phone number and email is out there. If people have questions, we take those into account and we listen. Thank you.
Yeah, just to expand on what Kirk said, we knew three years, actually, we would hoped to start that project three years prior to its actual start date. It was a big problem with us, the fact that that contract was delayed so far, that we thought the state was going to take the money away from us. And we were not going to be able to get that road updated at all. But we met with the business owners, all up and down 423, for three years, we met with them, and talked to them, told them what was coming, when we thought the dates were going to be affected, and when we were going to start. We also put in place, Branch Schallenberger was designated, we designated a specific person, specific phone to call, for not just the businesses, but for every citizen to be able to call, when you saw or identified something that you thought was a problem out there on 423. So we put a person in place to take your calls. That's never been done before in this city, and we did it because it's that important. You know, helping them get through this, well, hopefully, three years' worth of planning was enough time for them to plan for downtime while this road is being constructed. You know, it's not, it's not the city government's job to get involved in their, in their financial business model. We just don't. And, you know, I hope that the challengers here will go back and study a little bit more about the tax laws and city government's use of revenues, and how they are restricted in being able, you can't just give money to a private entity. That's against the law. So I challenge everybody to go out there and know those laws, before you start talking about giving away taxpayer dollars. Yes, there is a specific plan in EDC, or in CDC, where we can do this. Thank you.
All right. The rest of this question has to do with the challengers, and it's saying, what would you do to help these businesses who are being severely impacted by construction? Jasmin?
So like I said before, Kirk and Joe, it is an inconvenience. It is a necessary inconvenience in order to help our city grow. It needs to happen. We need bigger roads in order to take into account all of the new people who will be in our city. Yes, legally, there are limits that prevent city government from getting involved in private enterprise. This is true. This has been established. This is not only city, this is local, this is state, this is everywhere. However, I believe that there are avenues that the community could get involved in supporting our businesses there. You know, not, this is city government, but there are citizens who are involved on these boards, who do have a say in what happens in our city. I have participated, when I was in, when I lived in DC, there would be community events to support these local businesses, who were not sponsored by the government, but were sponsored by organizations who worked with the government, citizen groups. And to have, to say, you know, this is a citizen group. We know and we understand what's happening in our government, and we support the plans that are in place, but we also want to support our local businesses. And those are the groups that have that power to support those businesses. To have an event, or a rally, or something, say, "We love our local businesses. We understand what you're going through, and we're sorry that it's happening, but this will be better for us in the future." So I would move that we get these citizen groups involved. Thank you.
And I've touched base on this in the previous question, but to help these businesses on Main Street, you know, anything I do, it's done with research and on Main Street, you know, anything I do, it's done with research and done with something to back it up. My job in construction, the last 10 years as a consultant and executive director, I travel the state. I'm very familiar with every city in North Texas and also cities like Houston, Austin, San Antonio. So with that experience and with working with these local mayors and chief building officials, I see growth in certain parts of their cities and I don't see it in ours. Now, I mentioned the city of Grapevine and what they went, the businesses there went through with Tech Dot coming in and with the restructure of 114 and William D. Tate over there. That's when I first learned about this section of the Chapter 380 Texas Local Government Code. It's there. It's legal and it's ready to happen. I've seen it happen in Grapevine and it can happen here. And it will happen if I'm elected. It's not giving away taxpayer money. This is, and I'm not going to go into detail of it because, you know, I'm sure it'll, I'm sure it'll happen if I do, if I don't get elected, but this is something I'm passionate about to help these guys. If you want to know more about it, see me after this and I'll, I'll go into detail with it. But this is a tried and true plan and it will work. And it's not giving taxpayer money back. It's saving these businesses money. So the other part of that, as far as having Mr. Schallenberger in place to be that point of contact, that's awesome. That's great. But again, the big picture here is being proactive instead of reactive. These guys and these ladies that own these businesses on Main Street, you don't know how far it goes when you walk into their business, asks, asks to talk to their owner or general manager, they'll come down, they'll come out, they'll sit down with you and you'll just hear problem after problem, what they're having and what they're going through and their suggestions. It goes a long ways. It's all about being proactive and not reactive with these businesses.
Thank you. This, this next question is kind of a, it's, it's kind of a different kind of question because it also contains a statement. And it has to do with the Five Star complex. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and read the part of the question that's, that's a statement so that you can understand where, where this person is, is going. It says, this, this has to do with Five Star. It says, right now, the facilities need an update. The fields also are in poor shape, not enough patrol, keeping people off fields when not in use. That's the statement part of this question. For all of you and, and the incumbents and, and the people running, with all the activity happening at Five Star, how is the city going to keep up with the fields and facilities?
Where would you like to begin?
Joe? Let's begin with you.
Thank you, Ron. First of all, the Five Star fields are, are, they are our diamond here as far as our, our parks for play. And, you know, we are constantly evaluating the, you know, what's happening on those fields and looking at them and bringing on whatever, you know, fertilizers or whatever, the different soils. The problem that we have is keep, in, in keeping those, if we were to spend that kind of money, most of the CDC dollars that, that we take in would end up going onto that field. Is that a bad thing? No, it wouldn't be. The rest of the parks throughout the, you know, throughout the city, they might suffer. We don't want that either. So, you know, we are taking a look at making sure that we have the right groundspeople with the right amount of, you know, training out there in order to keep a, a look and keeping those fields up. Now, just like your front yard, you know, when you get 112 degree day, no matter how much water you put out there on it, we're not going to be able to keep those, you know, looking like they were an indoor stadium field. That we cannot do with the Texas, you know, weather the way it is. But we are committed and, and we are continually evaluating staff and, and what kind of work goes on, on those fields in order to make sure that they are top line fields. We know that there is a lot of financial potential still to come out of Five Star that we have not yet realized. And like I said earlier, managed competition that we look at, could we take a private company to come in here and pay the city and take better care of those fields? That would be weighed. But again, that's something that has to be evaluated.
Kirk?
Thank you, Ron. To expand a little bit on what the mayor said, we do get evaluations and we have dialogue with the people in Parks and Rec about Five Star. The mayor mentioned some of the details. To a person, the new businesses that have come in town have all mentioned Five Star. They're aware of the tournaments that we have there that we continue to attract there, whether it's softball, soccer. That helps the restaurants, that helps the hotels. So we continue to put what we need to into Five Star with the resources that we have without taking away from other parks and facilities in the community. As we continue to get more of those tournaments, more restaurant dollars spent, more hotel rooms, we're having new hotels come. Then we have additional monies to improve those facilities. But we must keep all of our facilities in working order. We don't want to rob one to pay for another. Thank you very much.
Jasmin?
I'm at Five Star a lot. I'm there almost every week, playing soccer, watching people play soccer. And, you know, like people have said, there is certain money that can be spent on every single park. We don't want all of our money going into one park because then other parks suffer, like the mayor said. However, and, and I'm a big proponent of this, I keep mentioning this, you know, I believe that there is a lot of potential in our communities and there are people who will be willing to get involved. We should explore, talking with the Parks Department, at what level can volunteers be involved? At what level can, can local citizens be involved and, and try to take care of these parks? We, we are, city government, unfortunately, we are not a trust fund. We have budgets and we cannot just have money coming out of nowhere. We have limits. But in order to be creative and explore different ways that we can solve our problems, we should look to the community. We should see, are there people who have knowledge of lawns and, and how sports fields work? And, and what can, what information can we get from them? Could they volunteer? It, it's branching out and looking for ideas from the community. People who do have experience and people who do know about these fields and who want to help and, and getting them involved and seeing how many people we can get to help take care of Five Star.
Eddie?
Well, it sounds like for the first time this afternoon, all of us agree on one thing and that's that money can't just be focused on one park in the city. Yes, Five Star is our golden child. It helped us achieve that title of sports city. But the excellent idea that was already brought up is an outside management company. Those guys know what to do. They know how to bring tournaments in, which will feed our, our restaurants and businesses here in the colony. So that would be my answer about Five Star is to look for an outside management company and let them utilize what we have and help them and let them also take care of what we have.
Okay. Thank you, Eddie. This question here is for everybody and it's our last question that I've received. If there's anybody else that has a question that they would like to ask, this would be a good time to write it down and bring it forward. This will start with Kirk. And this question here is, where do you stand on term limits?
Thank you, Ron. On term limits, citizens have the opportunity to vote or not vote for the candidate that comes forward. I propose keeping it as it is now. And again, every time you vote or choose not to vote, that's your voice. So if you don't want somebody there more than a certain number of terms, we have it in place. You vote for the person that's a challenger. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Mayor?
I've been all about term limits. I even put, pulled together a charter review committee in order to go through and look at our charter and make changes to the charter. The citizens on that committee, when I brought up term, term limits and changing our charter, absolutely shouted me out of the room. So, you know, if the citizens want, you know, the term limits, why is it that the citizens that come to our committees say, no way? You know, we don't want that in place. Even pointing out to the other cities across Texas that are going to term limits, even though I wish that we had term limits on Congress, get them out of the way. Maybe we could, you know, get something done up there from a national level, but, you know, in going with the view of our citizens, term limits are not there. It's not supported. They wouldn't even put it on the ballot. I said, at least put it on the ballot. Let's, let's send it out to a general election. They said no. They were representatives of the council. They went back to their councilman and said, you got to make sure that he doesn't get that question on the ballot. Because I brought it up, up there as mayor, saying, we need term limits. The council, based on their representatives of their districts and the people that they represent, said no. That question was not on the ballot when we changed, the last time we changed our charter. So, you know, if there is a push to do that, there is a way for the citizens to bring this up and push for term limits to get put out there on a charter review, change question and get it pushed forward. So if it's, if it's really that important, our citizens can make that happen. But right now, the people that are talking and the people that have had this, the say, and these are people of our community, say, no way. So that's where we are.
Eddie?
I absolutely agree with setting term limits and actually pleased that Joe shares that. I'm kind of surprised, but it's, it's healthy. It's healthy for, it's healthy for a local government. I, I think it should be based on more than just a committee of seven or eight people in a city of 40,000. When you hear it time and time again that, why doesn't our city have term limits? Yeah, the, the citizens can vote who they want to vote for, but there are citizens out there that, that want to run for council. And they know that without term limits, it's going to be difficult going against someone who has been a city coun, a seated, sitting councilperson for three or four terms. So they choose not to run. It is difficult. You know, it, it's kind of comical sometimes. I get questions about, as I say, local government election going on or has a presidential election started because they see Kirk signs and Joe signs. Kirk signs in the same yard, president and vice president. It's like, you know, we all know each other. Those guys have worked together a long time, so I'm sure they know a lot of the people that support them. But term limits are very important. You know, Councilman Terry is here. He reached out to me in 2009 to help him run against Joe in that election. And I remember, and it's probably still on Councilman Terry's LinkedIn, one of his colleagues at the business that he used to work for, made a statement that David Terry is not a career politician and that's why he needs to be elected mayor. I remember that statement and that was back in 2009 and that's very true today, that if the same people are there and they're, that they lose the sight of the big picture. And the big picture of is what's happening with the city. You know, some of these guys have started on council when we had 15, 18,000 population and we're, you know, mid 40s right now. Austin Ranch wasn't there back then. There's a whole other part of the colony and that's why term limits are so important.
Okay, Jasmin?
Yes. I do believe that there should be term limits because this, this is, this is a job. This is a position. There's no need for someone to have the same position for years and years and years. There are no terms on your involvement in the community. Just because you don't serve, excuse me, on city council doesn't mean that you can't be involved in the community. So I don't see any reason not to have term limits. That's my answer.
All right. A couple, there has been a couple more questions that came forward, so we'll go ahead and ask them. And we'll, we'll start with Eddie this time. And let's see, what is your policy on responding to constituents?
That's an easy question because my policy has always been being proactive. You know, when the election is here, our constituents, they see our councilpeople and people running our local government more than they do when they're not running. And I've heard that. I plan, if, if I'm elected, to continue to do that. You get your most feedback from people in our city and not just the people on these committees that are appointed by council. The people that, that are in our city and a part of our city that's been here, whether it's three years or 30 years, they have a lot of ideas. They have, they have concerns, complaints, recommendations, applaud about what the city has done or what the city can do. We can't limit that to an appointed board. Yes, those boards are very important. I served on two of them. But that's just a minute part of the voice of the citizens of our city. So to help those constituents is to do what I'm doing now, is to continue to go out and talk with them, not just these past two months, but these next three years.
Joe?
Sure. It is important to respond to our citizens to a point. When you're attacked, when you're called names, when you are, you know, blistered one time, you know, too many, that individual, you know, does not deserve a reply. The normal citizen out there sends us a question, asks us for what can we do? We respond to that in every case. We get our emails. We respond to our emails. We take our telephones, you know? Whether they call in and leave a voicemail, we call them back. It is important to communicate with the citizens when they reach out to us. Sometimes they don't like the information we share with them, but that's part of it, you know? You know, I was just called the other day and said, hey, we have a police problem and these policemen beat up my girlfriend. Well, there was an investigation. That's not what happened, you know? I still get an email, text back from the individual that says, thanks for your help. Everything's fine. So, you know, there, there's always reasons to check into these things and we do. We follow up on them. You don't always get an immediate answer, but we do follow up and do our research because it is important. And by doing so, you know, that communication, we can, you know, clear up some misconceptions and we continue to move forward. And we're going to continue to do that in, in this government going forward, over the next three years specifically. We're not going to change the way that we do that business because it is important to us. We put all of these citizen committees out there in place so that we get citizens' feedback, so that we can hear from them. The people on our boards do change, you know? So we do get good, different viewpoints coming in and out of all of those boards. Thank you, Bob.
Kirk?
Yes, citizen responsiveness. So over the last several years, we've made an improvement. Thanks to technology, when someone leaves a voicemail, that actually shows up on our email. It can be on a plane with wifi. You can be coming out of a meeting or sitting in a lobby and you can respond back with an email or send that email along to staff to address the citizen's question. There's also times in the community, whether you're at a high school musical, athletic event, coming out of church, any one of us might be the only councilperson that that resident knows. And there's many a time where Charlisse has waited there or my son Joseph has waited patiently while we listen to someone's question, someone's concern. Had a Vietnam veteran send him an email the other day. Didn't recognize the name, called him back up to ask him to visit a little bit. His concern was the water rates, utility rates. He didn't know about the upgrade that was required to our water treatment plant. He had a legitimate question. We addressed it. So I think it's great that technology has helped us out. I think it's great that staff is very responsive when we ask them to look into things and that method of working, method of operation is going to continue to go forward with responding to citizens in a timely manner. Thank you.
Jasmin?
I think it's the responsibility of every elected official to respond in a timely man, in a timely manner to its constituents. You were voted for a reason. It's your job to make sure that constituents are informed. And not only that, I, I don't believe that it's one's job to respond, but also to reach out, to, to be proactive in engaging with community members. I've met a lot of people who, who don't really understand what's happening and they want to know, but they can't find the time. And, you know, they can find out. They can call and there will be someone that responds. But I think that, that a city councilman, anyone on city government should be trying But I think that, that a city councilman, anyone on city government, should be trying to reach out personally. Hi, this is what's happening, this is what's going on, because I think that would have more of an impact, to show that we want to answer your questions, but we also want to have your questions answered before you ask them. It's, it's that thinking forward, that thinking ahead, that I think will show constituents that we are thinking about them, even when they might not have that question on their mind.
All right, this next question is probably, this question is asked to all, but it seems like Joe and Kirk, because your incumbents would have a closer feel for this, but I want everybody to answer this. It says, what are we doing to preserve our history here in the colony? Let's start with Kirk.
History of the colony. I'm pretty sure there's some folks sitting in this room and that live also around town that are, I would say, guardians of our history, getting the message out. They've arranged tours at Bridges Cemetery. They've had books published. I would continue to support those folks. Um, I don't wanna embarrass her, but she's sitting on the third row off the, off the aisle, and she's put hours and hours. Uh, we mentioned programs that we do for people across the community, we mentioned the schools. Those folks are also visiting with our young people, letting them know where we came from, how our city has grown. And I've had the opportunity to visit different sites, whether it's in Smithville, Texas, where the first Mikuliks came over in eighteen ninety-four and worked on a farm, or spots in Europe. Um, history is vital. We're making history today. We've got people that are sharing that information, cataloging that information. I applaud those folks, and I continue to support them. Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, Kirk covered that pretty well. You know, we went out and order, Bridges Cemetery is, is probably one of the most important features that we have here in town from a historical standpoint. Uh, it was really important, you know, the storm came through, we had a tree blow down, it's, it's bent some fences up. Uh, and, you know, I, I worked very hard in order to get local control of that cemetery. It was under the control of Denton County Judge. And by being able to make an interlocal agreement with Denton County, we now have the ability to go out there and fix that up. You know, we have now put a, a nice fence, you know, around three, three sides of the, of the cemetery in, in order to protect it. They have come out and they are going to do a ground survey out there, because they believe that there are additional grave sites, uh, that could be outside of, of the fence. So we are putting, you know, dollars into trying to find out, uh, you know, is that cemetery actually bigger than it really is? That's really important, that we protect that facility, you know, if it is. And we are going to take measures in order to do that. And so that's just one more piece of the way that, you know, we are trying to preserve the history. Kirk talked about the book. There has been a public book, a published book, you know, that talks about the older years. They are in the process of writing, you know, from, I don't know, Ms. Reeve wouldn't tell me exactly what year, but up to, you know, current times, um, you know, in, in order to get the second part of our history published. It is very fascinating what happened here, you know, in, in Peter's Colony from way back when, you know, and with the Bridges family. They still all live here, um, you know, and they are very interested in what we do. That's how we're keeping history alive here in our town and where we came from, to help us know where we needed to go in the future.
All right, Eddie?
Yeah, unfortunately, one of the things with growth of a city is, uh, what comes with that is the lack of the effort or spotlight on the history of it. And I love going to, whether it's the Colony High School and seeing aerial pictures before anything was around the Colony High School, or even some of the other local cities around town and, and seeing pictures of how that, of how it looked, um, years past. So, you know, I was very fortunate to work along with, um, Bill Longo when we were revamping and remodeling Old Engine Number One. And we all took, as volunteer firefighters, took pride in that, and also enjoyed listening to the stories that Bill had of, of this city and how it started. And it made us wanna work with him and, and work hard for him on that, that, um, fire engine. And hopefully, you know, with Station Number Four and Grandscape, that there'll be enough room to, to have that engine up there inside the building. The other thing is, you know, a great opportunity for all the new people coming to town, um, one of their first stops is City Hall, whether it's to get their water turned on, or whether it's a developer getting, picking up permits. There is, and has been for a long time, an empty trophy case there. I think there's one thing in there now, and it's boxing gloves for a boxing gym, but the rest of that trophy case is empty. It's a great place for first impression of people coming to our city to see things of, um, how the city started, or who the, the founding, um, people that, that came to town and, and stayed in town, the Bridges. You know, I walked in here, Ron, and I noticed that podium and Dick Weaver's name on there. Well, I was fortunate enough to meet a lady on, on Blair Oaks, and, um, I think Hack, near the street north of, and she lives across the street from him, before he passed. But all the stories that she had about Dick Weaver and all the artifacts that Dick Weaver has, be a great opportunity to have those up at City Hall. So I'm very pleased to see that podium there.
So having, uh, grown up here, uh, I've, I've gotten a lot of responses from people, you know, I would say, I remember when the library used to be here, and I remember when, when it was by Dollar General, you know, kind of like outdoing me, 'cause I'm a little bit younger. But for me, history is culture, history is people. People who have lived here their entire lives have so many experiences and so many stories to share with people who are moving in, or people who moved in later. And, and, um, you know, we have our cemetery, and we also have, uh, the library I know had been working with, um, collecting the documents of our city. And for me, that just screams just an event. Have some sort of an event to showcase all of the history of our city. We have physical establishments like our cemetery, but we also have people and community members who can share so much of their experiences here and their history. I'll have, um, I remember someone had told me, you know, I remember when it was just a new housing development in the middle of nowhere, and I'm fascinated by that, to think that this, this is how our city started. That, that to me is, is, is such a great story. And I think that we need to be able to have opportunities to share those stories, to get kids excited about it. History is, is something that should be shared, and I think the best way to do that is person to person within the community.
Our closing statements will begin with Kirk Mikulik.
This is closing statements?
Closing statement.
We haven't made it to the afternoon yet. I do appreciate y'all coming. I wanna thank the senior center for putting this on, Ron for moderating, and the other folks, Bob Lux, hug-a-month, Timekeeper. I'm asking for your support to reelect me as city councilman in place one. What am I gonna do as your city councilman in place one? We're gonna continue, continue to do those things we've talked about. Improve the infrastructure, attract new businesses. I said it last time, I'm gonna say it again. People move here to live the American dream. The team we have now is helping people live the American dream, period. How we're doing that? We're going into the schools. I know there's people in this room that have read it, whether it's Morningside, B.B. Owen, Etheridge. You can look back at pictures. Many of us have visited many of those schools. We have the student leadership programs. We have teachers emailing us saying, please come share what's going on with the city with us. We've brought folks from business into the schools to do role-playing. Role-playing for students who are going for their first job, who have never been on a job interview. So we've talked about all those cool things, the infrastructure, but that's what the new development means to the people of the colony. It means that your kid doesn't have to drive to Frisco or Lewisville to get a job, whether it's Hawaiian Falls, or Nebraska Furniture Mart, or Topgolf. You get the role-playing experience, you're going into your first interview, but really it's your second, because you've had somebody from HR, from one of those companies, practice with you, tell you, make the eye contact, do the handshake. Those are very personal touches that we have with folks, that we've brought to people. And I'm asking for your support to reelect me as city councilman in place one, so we can continue to do more of those efforts. Thank you very much for your time.
We're gonna go to Jasmine.
I'm looking for your vote today, and I'm asking for your vote today, because I believe that I can contribute an important perspective to our city government. We've had so many dedicated people who have worked years and years and years for our government, and I commend their efforts, but I believe that we need new blood, we need new ideas, we need different people to get involved. And I have been working half my life here for the colony before I could even have a job, serving my city, because I care, because I've had so many people who put the time and effort into me and my childhood and my development and my, who I am now today. And it's their care and their love that encourages me and motivates me to return that to my city. We need to get more community involvement, we need to inspire citizens to show their love for their city. When people complain, it means they care. We need to find avenues for these citizens to get involved. People do care about our city, they just don't know how. And I want to be able to provide opportunities for our citizens to get involved, to have their ideas shared, to have them put into effect. And I'm asking for your vote to help me do that. Thank you.
Mine's gonna be two-part. The second one, I'll get to in a second, but, um, first part, you know, I, I put aside a lot of things that are going on in my life and my career and my business to make sure that if I am elected, that I have the time, um, to do everything I've said that I would do these next three years. And I've said that before, it's three years and three years only. There's a lot of new people coming to this city that have a lot of great, uh, ideas and great energy, and even people on council today that would make a great mayor. So I'm one and done, guys. I wanna use my experience working with other cities and governments around North Texas, and my experience in the, the biggest issue we have right now, which is construction growth in this city, to be your, your next mayor. Second part is, we had one of these forums on September twenty-ninth, and there was a lot of questions at that forum, uh, big turnout, and there's a lot of questions that weren't asked. But for some reason, all of us were emailing those questions, there's about four pages of them. But one of these questions, I wanna, this is, I wanna read this question, because I think it's important. I thought about using it, um, if it didn't get brought up, and it did not. And the reason I chose to go ahead and read this question and address it today is because at a, a charity function for Metro Relief earlier this week, a lady came up to me and thanked me for running, and also asked me a question about, um, planning and zoning and what had happened about two years ago. Now, that kinda caught me off guard, because the only way she would know this was if she was involved with the city back then, or if she had heard that from somebody else with the city currently. So the troubling part about that is all of this took place in an executive session, no minutes, no video, which means no discussion. So it's out there, and I know it was out there because she addressed me about it. So I'm gonna read this question word for word, and I'll follow up.
Could I interrupt you for just one?
It's a question to me. Yes, sir.
Could I interrupt you for just one minute? It, it would be fair, if you're going to be reading a question, is this question directed to everybody?
No, sir, it's directly to me. I would love for them to have a chance to answer. And I don't need to read it, I can address the question.
Okay, go ahead.
So this question was specifically for me. Mr. McCormick, in October of twenty thirteen, you were unanimously voted off planning and zoning by the city council. Knowing that board members serve at the pleasure of council, what caused them to no longer want your service as a planning and zoning commissioner? Well, I was already into my second appointment, my second term was planning and zoning, and let's go ahead and set the record straight here. Yes, myself and two others were brought up for removal or relief of their services. It was myself, the co-chair, it was the chairman, Richard Branbury, and the past chair, Karen Hames. The only thing, because this is an executive session, there's no record of it, the only thing that we three could come up with was we were approached by our liaison before a council, before a P and Z meeting, and told that our job as P and Z commissioners is to push things through. Well, myself, Karen Hames, and Richard Branbury did not like that, and we spoke up about that, and a month later, we came to this. So, um, as far as any history or minutes or anything on it, there aren't, because it's executive sessions. Now, there's councilpeople here that may know that I've asked that question, I've emailed to make a, to have a meeting about that question, and finally got a response back about a month later. And again, at that meeting, asked that question and was not told the reason why. So anybody out there, or anybody's gonna watch this, and you have that question, I don't know the answer. Hopefully whoever is bringing it up can give you that answer legally, because they're limited on what they can say about that. But, and the last part of that, is that motivating my campaign? No, the motivation of my campaign is I've seen what needs to be changed in ordinances in, um, P and Z, and I wanna continue to make those changes, which is what has allowed this growth that we have in our city. So transparency is key, and that's what I'm here to do.
Does anyone here that?
Ma'am, did you have a question?
I think we're in closing remarks here.
Yeah, we're, we're in closing remark here. Does anyone here at the table wanna respond to Eddie's comments on that question?
Actually, I'd like to move forward.
Okay, Joe, it's your turn.
That's what this, that's what this, you know, whole campaign is about, is moving things forward. So, you know, yes, I'm here to ask for your vote. Vote for Joe on November the third, or starting next Monday, uh, early voting is starting, vote for Joe then. First name on the ballot, uh, right after the, the state questions, uh, just so you know. You know, there's been a lot of things, um, that's been brought up today, you know, talking about change, you know, and then we get brought up about three eighty agreements. Three eighty agreements are things of the past. Here, when we did the Nebraska Furniture Mart deal, we went outside the box, never been done before. The agreement that we brought up, that we put together, is a combination of many different types of funding and, and, and an agreement that was so difficult, we even sued ourselves down at the AG's office in order to make sure that it was legal, because we put together a, a way for us to take a multi-billion dollar corporation and bring it here as a little city. It is, it is so unique in what we did in order to get this done, that the big cities have gone to Austin and asked that these things be declared illegal. The little cities across Texas are saying, oh, no, you're not. This is our way to compete against you big guys and bring these great, great businesses to our little towns and improve us. We go outside the box, we are not static one degree. We continue to look for new ways and innovative ways to move our town forward and make it better for us. I live here, my kids, you know, are here, and we put in place an agreement, kind of unofficial. We wanted to build this city for our kids. We're not looking for us, we are looking to build this city for our kids. That's why we look five, six, seven years down the road about what we can do, is because we are building this town for our kids. And that's more important than anything I can do for me. So I'm gonna continue to go forward, I'm gonna continue to help our veterans. I am a veteran, I am a Marine, and, and veterans are very, very important to me. That's still gonna be one of the top items on my list. I'm gonna look at making sure that we have all of the amenities. You know, we work hard, and we've gone through all of the tough times. We put in the legwork, the sweat, in, in order to go out there and make these things happen. And we are going to incrementally move our improvements forward, so that we do not get our budget, like the cities around us have done. By spending more and not counting on what they've got to improve, um, we are going to continue to move us forward on a conservative front, so that we always have something there in the event of an emergency. That's why we have the, one of the best bond ratings of any of the cities in, in Texas, is because we are looking out for our finances. Your vote? Your vote, Joe McCurry, for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind the people, I want to remind the people that the people on this panel, besides coming out here today, these people are working people, just like a lot of you are. And I'm so, I'm so proud of all these folks that want to have an involvement in our city to make it, make it a better place. There is no, there is no wrong one of these persons that has any intention on our city except to make it better. Now, we have a couple city council members here.